Hello, hello. Test, test.
Testing, one, two, six, five, four, three. It's lit up, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Just gotta get closer, I guess.
Test one, two.
Hello?
Jim, are you hooking this up to natural gas at some point, or?
Well, we did the addition, we put a furnace in the addition.
Okay.
Because of the costs electric, we would have had to redo our service coming into the building. Um, we've got three overhead electric heaters in the old part, and I'm thinking when the time comes that one of those goes out, it probably would be more cost efficient to go to gas, I don't know. If that answers your question.
Oh, I just saw them here, you gotta pipe.
Okay, everybody make sure that you got your microphones on, it's six thirty, let's go ahead and start the Hillsborough City Commission meeting with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Because of the weather tonight, we've had a couple, our city engineer couldn't make it down from Grand Forks, and we'll probably expedite through the agenda as fast as we can so that we can get everybody home. So, starting out with number two, which is number three. Um, the reading of the minutes this last time, has everybody had a chance, all the commissioners had a chance to take a review, and if so, could I get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Dave makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mike seconds, is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, all opposed, same? Presentation of bills, has everybody, all the commissioners had a chance to take and get through the, uh, the bills and make sure that they got everything signed? Any questions? If not, uh, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mike makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Paul seconds, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Disconnects.
I'll move to approve the disconnects.
Levi makes a motion to approve the disconnects.
I'll second.
Mike seconds, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same? Disconnects are taken care of. Moving on to, uh, the city, report of the city officers, Jim, it's good to see you back, uh, I guess we're gonna start out with you? Nope, sorry. I skipped a line. City commissioners reports, Levi, let's start with you.
Uh, nothing new to report at this point.
Okay, uh, the airport authority meeting is supposed to be tonight, I don't know if they canceled or not because of the weather, but, uh, I talked to Les Hurt last night, uh, they're looking at closing out one of the, uh, the grants, and the hangars are all, uh, basically rented out, and they have a couple newer rental, you know, rental requests that they have, so things are going good at the airport. Dave?
Uh, I have nothing other than what's on the agenda.
Okay, Mike?
Uh, I just got one thing, um, we talked about this at one other time, the, uh, building incentives, which were coming up on another building season, and with, uh, Riverview out there, maybe we need to look at, they're at two years, seventy-five thousand per year. I thi- I think that could be raised.
Okay.
Maybe even doubled. If you wanna make it worthwhile for people looking at building out there.
Okay.
I don't know, that's my opinion, but.
Yeah, I think that, uh, two of the three years, um, another, uh, request that I made of Steve today when I talked to him, uh, is to check with their grant people out in Bismarck. Apparently, the US Treasury, because of some of the, uh, relief money, has a grant available for, uh, condemned, uh, uh, buildings and different things like that, rejuvenation, so I asked them to check with their grant, uh, the gentleman they have out in Bismarck that follows that. If so, a great example would be is if we could get some grant money, the chicken scratch, scratch building, for example, maybe there's some money that could roll in if that, uh, gets condemned. It's the same way with the rejuvenation, but I like your idea about, uh, Riverwalk, uh, the incentives out there, so, but I would open it up for other opinions from other commissioners too. Do you wanna take and have a motion and approval tonight, Mike, or do you wanna, everybody think about it?
I just brought it up for something to think about with the building season coming up here, so. It'd be a good place to start with that just getting going, so.
Okay.
So right now, it's, uh, the first seventy-five thousand?
Yeah.
For what was it, one or two, two years?
Two years. And speaking from experience, it's not a lot when you get it. So.
And I know the legislative, uh, agenda this last session, they talked about raising it up to a hundred and fifty, they, there was some action, but I can't remember if that was resolved or approved or not, I'd have to go back and check. Cause we got, uh, they talked to me and they talked to Steve Benson over at, uh, Mayville to get inputs, I know Jim Murphy was going around doing some checking, so let's go ahead and put that on Ashley, uh, to talk some more about it for us to think about, and then, uh, uh, in the next commission meeting or so, let's go ahead and discuss it some more. Okay?
Yep, that's all I got.
Paul?
I just have a couple things, uh, I got some stuff, Ashley's getting me some stuff on the cemetery and all that Jim's back, hoping we get together on some electric stuff, and you can get me up to speed on how that all works, the billing and stuff like that. Uh, personnel, of course, we're gonna shove that handbook, or we'll get a final draft of it tonight anyway. I'd just like to touch two and a couple things if I could with the HEDC, I kinda like to tie in the HBA, we had an HBA meeting just recently, and one of the topics of conversation was updating all of our Christmas decorations and the light poles. And I just kinda, it's more an FYI, that we're trying to, we're trying to coordinate that with a lot of, a lot of groups to try and get, get a good idea of what would be a, a good ornament. You know, how can we pay for it, and how can we all work together to pay for it and things like that? That's something that the HBA is, is working on to, uh, you know, to, to kinda spearhead it and get it going, and hopefully if, uh, there's anybody out there that has interest in something like that, doing some work on that, uh, having input on that, we'd sure like to hear from them because, uh, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a big project. It's kinda costly, so if anybody has input on that, we'd let myself, she, or JR know about that, so, and then we were also looking at doing something with flower baskets, you know, hanging baskets and things like that, so, all, all things that are in the talking phase, but they're all things that would affect the city of Hillsborough and the beautification side of Hillsborough, so I'm sure you guys are probably touching on it too, so maybe we need to have one of you guys, or come to one of your meetings too and see how we can incorporate those together too, so.
I think it'd be cool to have, uh, downtown to music and have lights going off and on.
There you go.
At Christmas time, instead of just decorations.
Did I just hear Levi say he's gonna volunteer his decorations for the park out here?
Hey.
I'd like, I'd like to see us, since we have such a hard time getting Christmas trees, artificial ones put up, I'd like to see us plant a few, like four or five foot evergreens, you know, five or ten out here in the park, that people could actually, that we could decorate every year, and, and an organization could supply those ornaments, and and that would be something that would be more, more of a, you don't have to worry about the wind blowing it down type of thing, and, and stuff like that, I think it would be just something that I think, you know, we're really being with our new beautification committee and stuff, it's, I think, uh, I think those are things that we all can talk about and maybe move forward on.
You wanna cover the timeline that you're talking about, Paul, a little bit more in detail?
On, on the, on the plots, we're hoping, they're, they're trying to get something maybe together this summer, but they don't know. The ornaments would be something, it seems like the best deals on ornaments are in January, so we'd probably, what I'd try and do is get a plan of attack together so that come next January, and you can correct me, JR, so that next January, or at the season end, we can try and get some good deals on, you know, make sure we can get the best bang for our buck. So we're talking January of next year, hopefully having things in place, and talking to companies, she gave me two more flyers, a couple more companies that, uh, that might have interest, so Jim can attest to they're getting in tough shape, so they're beautiful, but, uh, you know, they're getting old, and I don't know, do you even know how old they are, Jim, they had thirty years, I don't know how old they are, but.
I think some of them been here longer than, than before me.
Right, so, so I, I, it's just things, we can look at it, and if it's something that we look at and we say, oh, we just can't do this, but, but the HBA, I think, was in full support of doing what they could do on their part to help make it, help make it go, and, uh, I would, uh, I'm also planning on hopefully bringing it up when they have the next HEDC meeting in the city, we, but also have different organizations, you know, that maybe Kiwanis, you know, other organizations, that we'd like to have as many community people, you know, give some input into it, you know, somebody might have some ideas, somebody might have some contacts, or that they know of somebody that sells these things, or, or works with this, because this is a project you don't do every year, so we wanna make sure that we, so we do it right. It's just, uh, more of a, a heads up that we wanna move forward with this, so, so if there's anybody that has any input or questions or can, you know, but it is not gonna happen this year, it's something that we'd be looking at doing, you know, we probably would order them hopefully sometime next year for the next, the following Christmas, so it's we're planning way ahead of time, so we can hopefully get the best bang for our buck, so.
Well, if you want it to music, they go on sale in June.
What's that?
The music ones go on sale in June.
Do they June, okay? We'll have to get right out of there.
I don't care where mine is at, as long as it's up somewhere, so.
So, but I think that's other than what we got on the agenda, I think that's all I have.
Okay, uh, moving on now to the city officers, Jim?
I don't have anything.
Okay, uh, JR?
Nothing but the agenda items.
Okay. Ashley, it's up to you.
Okay, I received a email from Dave Nelson this morning with a request to put up the batting cages at the Armory this weekend on January twenty-ninth, and Bambi is aware of it and is okay with it, um, just wants the commission's permission to do that since baseball and softball season practices are gonna be starting here in the spring.
What about the walkers?
I don't know what these cages look like, so I don't know, does that?
I'm trying to remember, we, we, we were, they could walk last time when they put the cages up.
There's a little bit of room.
They take them up and down?
Keep them out of the way enough that they can walk around the outside or whatever.
Okay.
If there's vents in there, or they can, can they be put away?
Then they take them down, is my understanding.
Okay.
And it does slide, the, the wires will go up, and probably stay up, but the, um, cage itself would come down.
They store that down there then?
Not sure where it is stored.
I don't think it's in the back room, I think they bring it in.
Bring it in.
Yeah. Good questions, Paul. Okay, so we want a motion then?
I'll move to approve that.
Levi makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Paul seconds, any discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Any yes for me?
Okay, and then we had, um, a raffle that came in late this morning, um, because they had handed in two together, and they can't do that, and so, um, we thought it was all one raffle when they originally submitted the request, and then we found out it was not, so we asked them to resubmit a new one for this time around for the raffle, so that was brought in today for the Hillsborough Public School, so I just need a motion to approve that one.
For a month, the way it looks, Ashley? January nineteenth through February thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Dave makes a motion, Mike seconds, any other discussion? Levi?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me?
Um, and then I had sent out that Living Local app in, instead of, um, or in place of the Text My Gov, that Living Local app that, um, from Cat and Company, I sent you guys all a promo. Sarah and I went through a promo with the company, and it's free for two years due to a grant that they got through the state of North Dakota. Um, and I forwarded to everybody to have input, I forwarded to, cause it's more of a community app, um, not just a city app, it would be something that, um, HBA, HEDC, the school, but the school already has their own app, us, uh, Trail County Economic Development could use it, um, and I sent the demo that we did out to everybody, and I only got responses from Paul. And Paula said she wasn't interested for the school aspect, and she never got back to me about the HEDC's aspect, and Jim Murphy told me he hadn't looked at it yet, and I haven't heard, I sent it out to all you guys too, and I haven't heard anything back.
I don't have a computer, so.
What?
I don't have my laptop.
I know you have, I have your laptop.
Okay.
Um, I did make copies of this today last minute, sorry, um, if you want this passed around. And I think Paul, you had watched it, right?
Yes.
It's just something to keep in mind and, um, just an option, we don't have to take it, but it is, it would be free for the first, it would be free for the first two, two years, so, um, and then after that, off the top of my head, I can't, I'm not sure, I think it's like seven hundred and fifty?
Fifty, yep.
A year?
Yep.
So, and like I said, I sent it out to everybody and I got no response, so I'm just, this is me just reminding everybody to look at their email, and if you're interested, let me know if you want me to keep looking.
Can we, uh, table this then, and bring it up at the next commission meeting so that we have a chance to go through it some more?
Yep.
Okay.
And that is all I have.
Okay, Steve, it looks like a long night for you. Anything to add, or we, do you think the interstate's gonna get closed down?
I don't foresee it getting closed at this point, but.
Okay. And the Armory's ready to go in case you need it, so. Okay, anything else, Steve?
Not at this point, unless you already discussed the other items.
Thank you, uh, we have, uh, Steve called in, said basically he couldn't travel, so we'll take and talk about his and the next project with the old business here, so. Moving on to old business, the first thing that comes up, we wanted to take and, uh, have a chance to, uh, bring information about the, uh, street repaving projects, uh, for the city of Hillsborough, and, uh, there's a number of issues, Dave's been good, uh, he's got the streets portfolio, we've had a number of meetings, uh, just so the citizens know, we thought that this was the appropriate time for us to take and bring it out now to the public, so that we can have some more meetings, we in fact, uh, met with, uh, Tom Eblin and Glenda, uh, basically to talk about how the county potentially could help out for, uh, Caledonia, and we did, uh, make a statement then to Dave to, uh, uh, take and go over to one of the county commission meetings and basically, uh, kinda brief them in some more, so you wanna take and talk about it?
No, you're doing fine.
Okay. One of the big.
I wish Steve would have been there, cause he could explain a lot of, you know, some of the other things too, but.
And I told him that, uh, we would be basically, uh, looking at the next commission meeting, hopefully it will be better than this one here too. But, uh, they went through and they did a pavement evaluation, with a, a map and everything of what we wanted to do, and, uh, there were areas that were very poor, I think, uh, uh, Jim, if I remember correctly, there was some that was satisfactory, a couple of good ones, but this is kind of a, a pretty big project, and, uh, what we wanted to do was price it out, we asked AE2S and the city engineer to come up with a couple of options, so there's actually five options that we will be looking at, that they bid out in total, and then we have I guess the opportunity, after we visit with the citizens of Hillsborough, to, uh, go back and take a look at, maybe we should back off. The one complicating factor that we have right now, it's really kinda throwing a wrench into the whole, uh, uh, I guess, uh, proposal. There's potentially grants that are out there that could be available, but what that would do most likely is take us past the prime bidding, uh, time this spring, if we wanted to do it all, and so then another, uh, discussion that Dave and I kinda led was, do we wanna maybe break up the, uh, the total city pavement uh, project into two years versus one year, and then, uh, we have to have that discussion about, will inflation then take and, uh, actually, uh, if we get grants, reduce the amount of, uh, efficiency and effectiveness that those grants would have for us? So these are all details that Steve is gonna take and cover, uh, when he comes in, uh, you can see the cost estimate, uh, is about twelve million to do the whole city. A lot of the city would be a two, uh, two inch, uh, uh, what do you call it, two inch?
Two inch overlay.
Yep, two inch overlay, some of it does go down to four, it would include all the manhole covers, we talked about the surface drainage, curb and gutter, and some of those things, uh, being added in, and Dave can kinda chime in here too. Another big, uh, cost for this is the handicapped accessible, uh, you know, basically on the corners for us, uh, that's roughly about three thousand per corner, and, uh, the legally, you know, JR can kinda add to this too, that we asked if there was a way that we could get by without doing all the corners when we redo it, and the answer was no, basically, that, uh, because of the Disabilities Act, uh, we would have to take and do them all at, uh, at the time that they do it. Uh, and at three thousand dollars, so that was one issue that we wanted to take and talk about, uh, and then there would be a little bit of drainage. Jim, I think you have talked in the past about, we don't wanna be tearing the streets up, but, uh, doing the cameras and, you know, checking our under, the piping under, under the, uh, the streets and stuff, I think you've taken a look at, and, uh, we're doing one quarter of the city per year. Uh, and that's the only intangible that I kinda worry about, uh, that if something happens, but, uh, do you wanna add anything there, Jim?
No, I don't think so, I just think that there's always gonna be, we're always gonna be tearing the streets apart, so, I mean, you can't cover everything all before this, and, uh, I think we just take issues as they come, so.
Okay, and before we have Ashley talk about the specials, um, this has a pretty high contingency, but I wanted to kinda throw out there, uh, Park River just went through a project that AE2S did a couple of years ago, uh, Laramore is going through a project about twenty-eight million dollars for theirs, um, so when you take a look at twelve million compared to what some of these other cities have spent, we're probably sitting a bit better than they are, but, uh, I want Ashley to kinda go through, because we see a couple of our specials coming off, uh, next year, no, this year. Um, and so that would start to help with the, uh, special assessment that we would be doing, so, Ashley, if you could kinda cover that?
So, we have, um, two for sure that are coming off in the twenty-twenty-two tax year, so not, right now, we're in the twenty-twenty-one tax year, cause it's a year behind, this, these two for sure will come off in the twenty-twenty-two tax year, so it would be next year would be the last payment of those. And then the ones that I highlighted in orange, um, appear in our system to also be going off in the twenty-twenty-two tax season. But Julie's gonna call the Bank of North Dakota just to make sure, she's not sure if there's a payment from the city debt relief fund, or if we, how, how we got so off there, and this just wasn't, our spreadsheet just wasn't adjusted, she's gonna call the Bank of North Dakota and find out more information, so potentially there's four that'll come off after next, at, at the end of this year.
But one of them is just for Prairie View, just to know with that, so it's just, it's just tax and the Prairie View addition, not the whole city.
The one is, yep. So then, but the other three are the, for the whole city.
And, uh, to go along with that, uh, I did have the discussion with Steve today too, there is prairie dog money that, uh, uh, we got last year, and, uh, oil's up around eighty-four, over eighty-four dollars a barrel today, and so those coffers are filling up again. I asked again to coordinate with Ashley and Julie about, uh, what we could expect coming with, uh, prairie dog, uh, for this year, so uh, what we wanted to do though is to try to take and, uh, keep the price of special assessments down, and the fact that these specials are coming off, uh, will make it a little bit more bearable, and that's kinda where we wanna take and start to open up the discussions around town. Uh, Dave and I, uh, and Ashley, uh, you know, we'd love to get together, maybe have some special meetings where we can start to have the citizens come in when it's nice, and we start to highlight it, we can show you the maps of the cities, the city, I should say, and, uh, how we plan to take and do the different streets and stuff, and Jim, that'll probably be a big one for you to help us out with too, so uh, stand by, Dave, any, anything that I missed?
No, uh, it's gonna be costly, but, you know, if we, if we hold off anymore to do it, it's just gonna get more expensive down the road, and.
Have we looked at the, uh, the Third Avenue Northeast drainage? In this plan? Or it might be Second Avenue Northeast, so it'd be just about down to, um, Post Road, where that big drainage ditch goes in, cause when we get a heavy rain, that is backed up in the many streets, so I didn't know. Probably by that apartment building. There's a lot of square footage of that one drain back when they designed the, the storm drain. Majority of that east side of town goes to that drain. But is there something that we can look at and do while we're doing this project to help with it, whether we go out to the drainage ditch and go that direction with it, or something else, cause it, it gets, it's almost backed up to, well, it is backed up to Seventh and First.
I know that, uh, Levi, that, uh, we did have discussions about drainage, surface drainage specifically, and so I, I, not being an expert, I don't wanna get too far ahead, but I think Steve would be able to answer some of those questions for you.
Well, this is more than surface drainage, this is.
Going into the ditch, but the surface, cause we talked about the dips that we have on our streets, how they might be, be raised up in the curb and gutter and more drains put in, so that was part of it.
But that isn't gonna help the issue, cause it's not, it gets it all there, but it can't get out.
That drain covers everything from, say, the school.
Right.
East to Caledonia Avenue, so that whole quarter of town goes through that one drain.
Right, I mean, I hate to say it, it is almost, it is worse than, or than, um, Loyal Avenue.
Unless we can go, say, a block south and alleviate some of it and go out to the ditch there, but that would be something that they'd have to put into their.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, right.
I'd print these, cause Steve was planning on being here.
Right.
And he has, he has big ones, so.
And I had seen it on there, but I didn't see that the actual drainage was, so that's, but I just wondered if we talked about it, and that might bring up a point that, you know, maybe we should have a meeting sooner than later with the public, or get some type of, not necessarily to go over the plan, but just get issues that people are seeing and start putting them down somewhere, you know, whether we start a book of, you know, if, um, they bring them in, Ashley, and drop them off, or they call in and tell us just some of those issues that maybe people aren't seeing or we don't see or Jim doesn't see because it doesn't affect them all the time.
And I think we're open, we've been meeting, so yeah, that's the gist of what we want to do.
We do want to do some public meetings and get input on it.
You're going to get a lot of the, I call them bird baths. After rain, you get little puddles here and there in every driveway in town. I mean, just so we don't have a lot of that. I mean, you can only, you can only plan through so much water, so. But we could look at that area up there, I know what it is.
And we'll pull Steve in for some of these initial ones too, so that he can cover more.
We'll talk to him about that.
Yep. Anything else?
What kind of timeline are you looking here? What are you, what are you looking at?
We kind of threw down March, we don't want to go past March.
No, but I mean, as far as, what are your thoughts, you know, about meeting with the public? Having Steve meet with the public, having, you know, public input, bidding?
I'm ready to go. Dave's been really flexible too, so.
Yeah.
But the weather is kind of a player for us the next couple of days.
Yeah, we're going to have to do public meetings and I don't know. I've still said this year, I just don't see it happening this year, but-
Well, that's kind of the point I'm maybe looking at is if you're, because they had mentioned about bidding in February. Well, there's no way we can realistically plan that, so.
It's, yeah, I, I can honestly say that I don't see it happening this year. But, you know, I guess we just got to work.
I think there's a lot of, lot of issues that need to be covered yet.
Yep.
I mean, this is a big project and we, you know, it's going to consume us the whole year. And we've got two other projects coming this summer. And I, to me, I would feel more comfortable is do some more planning through the year and then-
I agree, 100%, I think we get to do that.
Streets, they're not going to, they're not going to blow up, we can, we can keep. I know everybody will be disappointed, but it's, it's a lot of money. It's a big project.
I think they'll be disappointed, they'll just be upset with us if we just start doing a quick job too, you know, so. That's my opinion anyway, that I don't foresee it.
That's the benefit of doing these meetings though, to the cost benefit analysis. Because if we go through into an inflationary period, you're going to see the costs go up too. So we have to trade all those things and make sure that the citizens give us their opinion and kind of go from there, but.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that's where our, kind of our timeline is, is how soon can you get with the citizens? How soon can you set up a meeting because you're not going to have a meeting tomorrow? Or, you know, you got to plan for that so people can plan to be there and, and things like that. So we have to have, it takes time.
Any project is like that, they just, you know, it just, just don't start laying pavement, it just, you know, it's-
Well, and Steve Swanson said that the grants, we won't even know anything about the grants until March.
And that's, again, do we, another option that we discussed was splitting it up into two years, which, but then you pay a premium because now those pavers have to come twice and all that equipment has to be moved. So, yeah, it's going to be a complex one.
We're just going to have to do the best we can do, that's, you know.
Did we look at, I assume this doesn't put the plan in for new street signs with this, does it?
Yes.
Yes, it does, yep.
Okay.
It's actually a lot cheaper than I thought it was going to be.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's all new science.
Any other questions? Thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Moving on to the employee handbook, Paul.
Has everybody had a chance to review the changes?
The only ones that I wanted to kind of get an update on was what Ashley and Jim talked about for their inputs. About the pay, I guess.
Oh.
Do you mean you want your sheet?
I had proposed giving out pay incentives for water and wastewater classification, for operator classification. Right now, we just do a, I can't think of the word. Ask them to, if they so desire to get a classification. I, I just think that-
So what you're talking about, Jim, is an incentive?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and I kind of went through on the sheet, I think everybody has it. And best I can, came up with some numbers. Of course, the class ones are the easier ones. And then as you go up, of course, the testing is a lot more-
Which ones do we need for our-
The, the ones we need are highlighted. So say if, you know, we had an operator that went and, and these come, you have to work so long before you can take, I think it's a minimum of a year before you can test and go up a class. They allow you to go one over, but I added that at that point, it would be up to the operator, it's his choice. So I don't feel that an increase from the city would be necessary. But-
Because there's more than class three and is that what you're saying?
In water treatment, we need a class three to run the water.
Right, but when you said you would-
There's four classes in each one of those.
Gotcha, but those are the only, those are the ones that we need.
This is the ones that they require, the Department of Health requires us to maintain, to run the water system.
And you have to have all four, correct?
Correct. One person doesn't have to have all four, but you need someone within your employment that has that classification. You know, the big cities, you have a water department and then you have a wastewater department that's separate, so. Exactly. We don't have that luxury here.
I, I think this is a good idea, but I'm going to defer to Paul. But what about electrical, you know, with all our infrastructure? Is, if we're going to do water, should we think about someone getting?
There's really no classification for the electric end. I mean, you're going to have to, if it comes down to it, you're going to have to actually hire linemen. Which is a whole different animal. I mean, you're going to have to hire someone that's certified lineman and pay them all the benefits, be a separate employee. The only other option is you send someone to school and then they come out of school and they're brand new and-
And I think Missouri River would pay for the schooling, if I remember correctly. They got a program that would do a lineman training, but-
I think, my feelings is electric because I think we need to approach them more and, and ask them to help us out in that, in that area. I mean, they, they already have all those crews and I'm, I'm thinking hopefully that they could, it would make it feasible that they could actually hire a couple more linemen and just run them through several members. So I, I think we just need to have more talks with them on that end.
Okay.
Is there any other, like, for mosquito spraying or any other things that our guys have to get certification for?
Those all have to be certified.
So mosquito or spraying, is there anything else that we have that?
I don't think so.
Confined spaces, do we have to do any confined spaces stuff? I'll turn it back over to you, Paul.
Okay. You would probably want to just add that in on the, on the wage section, is that what you're looking at doing?
I think so, yes.
Okay. We'll just kind of, I'm just going to, I'm going to go to, I got a question on page nine. If anybody has certain questions or anything, they just kind of jump in as we're going forward here. But I'm good up till page nine unless somebody has a question on anything. This is just, on the drug testing, it does show that we, we are, that we can do drug testing. Do we have, is that just random, Jim? Or do you actually say we do it once a year, twice a year, or is it just?
They do random, they do a lot.
Just random, so.
They just throw you out of the blue and-
Okay, but would it be once a year or twice?
No, depends.
Okay.
You might not go for nine months and then all of a sudden you got two of them back to back.
I was just asked that question.
Sometimes you get called twice a year, you know, same person, so.
And I was just asked that question, so that's why I had. And then on, and like I said, again, jump in when you're ready. I talked to, this is different than the one I got, when I got, but maybe some of this, oh, smoking. All city buildings will be smoke free, this policy applies to all employees, customers and vendors. We talked about, I talked to Ashley about this, about making sure that we include vehicles and equipment. I know it's pretty common sense, but, you know, that would eliminate anybody having a question about that. Because it's, well, it just says in here, buildings, it doesn't say I can't do it in the pickup.
I think it'd be easier just to say, if we're going to change it, that the city of Hillsborough is a smoke free workplace. And that's, the policy applies to employees, customers, visitors, because that would be all places that they are working. Just my thought on that.
I think the county policy manual actually states vehicles. Remember Steve?
I'm just thinking that if we, sorry, I'm just thinking if we just added, you know, just even simple as adding, you know, vehicle, or equipment and property, you know, into that same section, it would probably cover at least what I'm looking at.
I agree with you.
So that's the one I got there.
If we do have a smoker, do we have to have a designated smoking space by a building? I don't, I've never seen NFR guys smoke, but, you know, like with a commercial business, it has to be 15 or 20 feet?
20 feet, yeah.
Yeah, so do we, if you want to save vehicles, is, do you want to put something in for, if you have a smoker?
Well, that's kind of why you don't want to really necessarily probably put property, you want to, because they'd have to follow those 20 foot rules. You know, so you don't really say they can't smoke on the property, they just can't smoke in the buildings and in the equipment. You know, but you can smoke, if they go out and sit by the, you know, 20 feet away from the building, they're probably free to smoke, I would, I would assume. I don't know how, I don't know how fussy you want to get there, Jim, I don't, you know.
I don't, I don't care, I don't think it's-
I don't think it's an issue, but-
So if I come and smoke my cigar out in front here, on one of the benches, I'm 20 feet away?
I don't know, you'll have to bring a tape measure to verify it, so. So, but I-
We'll mark it off for you there. Terry Spot.
So, I don't know what your thoughts, Levi, is that, would that be work, would that be workable or? It's pretty basic.
I think it's fine. It's not that hard for somebody to go off the city property to go smoke either.
Well, let's just put vehicles.
And that's what most schools, most counties have went to, those, I mean, if you ask our public health, that's mostly what they are.
We can sure, we can sure, if Jim doesn't have a problem with it and Ashley, because they're the ones doing the property. And if they have a smoker, you don't want property? Or you don't care?
I don't care.
Yeah, so we could put on all city, on, on city property, you know, to include, to include equipment. I know, I just want to, I just kind of want to make sure that we have that specific that includes equipment and vehicles and stuff like that. And you can put property too, if you want to put all city property, but just make sure that we include-
If you, if you just say it's a smoke free workplace, that means wherever we have city employees, it's smoke free.
I'm just saying, you know.
The only question that comes up, I think legally, and correct me if I'm wrong, JR, but if you have a designated smoking place, then you have to have some sort of a, a catchment or, you know, a tower where you can put butts and stuff like that in, correct?
That's a very good question, I'm not quite sure, I've never had to look into that piece of the law. I can definitely look into it to see, I don't know if there is a requirement to provide a smoking area though. That's up to them on their own breaks or personal time.
And I don't think there's anything at the courthouse outside in a designated area, if I remember correctly, it's all.
Nothing up the shop either.
So maybe it's a can of worms we don't want to open up. Okay?
So we'll put it, so we'll put it as, as buildings and equipment or build, or property, which we just have to decide, so we don't-
And equipment, leave property out.
So leave property out, so all city buildings and property and equipment will be, not property, but equipment.
Will be smoke free.
Will be smoke free.
If I just put, um, the city of Hillsborough is a smoke free workplace, including, and then I'll list out vehicles, equipment and property, that way it covers everything?
Just to be a devil's advocate, if with that policy, somebody can go sit at the bench at the pool and smoke. Because they're outside.
But they're on the property.
But they're on property, the city property.
That's why he wants property put in there, so.
But that's what I just said, is on, and property.
Yep.
But what Paul was saying, didn't have property.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
She was just clarifying how she wanted it written so we would all know. And, and I'm fine, I don't care if it's property or not, I just want to make sure the people that deal with the property don't have a problem with it.
So if I wrote it like that-
I think it sounds good, what you read.
If I wrote it like that, Levi, it would be covered.
Yes.
Okay, is that okay with everybody?
It's okay with me.
That's fine.
Okay. And then, um-
I think on page 10, under dress code appearance, we need to add our policy about whenever our public works or anybody's working on the streets or right away, that they need to be in proper attire. That's on page 10. We had already approved it, it's just putting it in here.
Safety clothing, is that the way you want to say it?
Yep. That sounds good.
It's already in here, both for safety reasons and to reflect a positive image. You wanted to add to that?
You want safety reflective?
Well, I think it's fine.
I think it says it, because it does have safety in there already, if that's what you're looking at.
Well, it has safety in there, but the safety could be, you have to wear steel toe boots.
Does that, did you want steel toe boots?
No. You know, these guys are working out more in the, in the weather extreme, cold, wet. I think that's more of an issue and that's what the reason for the warm gear was. I think asking them to wear the colored clothing is a good idea, especially more so when they're on the street. But the cold, the steel toe shoes tend to be bitterly cold, they get cold, I mean, your feet are going to freeze, so I-
We wear a composite at the county.
Yeah, that's- Still, it's still, it's, you know, they, they want warm, a pack boot, a, a sorrel boot that keeps their feet warm, not something that's got some hard plastic or metal in it that's going to freeze their toes. And that's just my opinion.
Only problem I have is if something happens, a snowplow drops on their foot, or they drop a heavy shoe or something on their foot and smashes their toes and the workman's comp comes in.
Yes, and that could happen.
That's the only concern I have.
How are you going to cover every accident that you, do you want them to wear?
Well, I know, I understand, but I, I personally think they should be wearing some kind of foot protection. In the line of, and I, I, I see where, you know, I know they're working out in the snow and, and, but I just think it's good protection.
I think if we added in instead of safety, because it's just saying that they're wearing it for safety, but another item that proper attire must be worn that is, that meets federal and state regulations, I think would cover all of it.
NC approved is what they call it.
Right. But it could be, you know, when Jim's working as a lineman, there's different things. Just saying, if we're saying that you need to wear the proper clothing for that job according to the federal guidelines.
Yep, ENSI. Yep, ENSI.
ENSI, what's that?
American National Safety, I can't remember last one, but it's, it's on all, you can go buy a safety wear, I mean, it's, it's, a lot of the wear is good, but most of the time it's supposed to say NC approved on the back, so.
Okay.
Maybe I'm getting a little nitpicky, but they're doing a good job, I gotta say that about the guys they're.
I, I can, I can see both of your guys' eyes, I can see clear as both of you, so.
Yeah.
I can see both sides of it, so.
I, I just, you know, the composite, right? I and everybody else down there is wearing composite, and we're out in the cold too, and so.
Used to, used to.
Yeah, used to, I'm, I'm, stand corrected.
You got that, Ashley?
So, proper ENSI approved work attire?
That okay, Dave, and?
Yep.
Anything else on that? Any more input, Jim?
No.
Okay. Okay, and then the next one I have, I was gonna jump up to thirteen unless somebody's got something before that. Just to clarify, just a clarification on the regular full-time employee. About halfway through there, it talks about a regular full-time employee is eligible for all benefits for purpose of, purpose of ca- classification and eligibility of benefits, all elected officials are considered to have the same benefits entitled as full-time employees. I just wanna clarify if that is accurate or not. Cause I thought at one time there was conversation about that, so.
Yeah, there was, cause we were thinking about, uh, only for the health insurance to be grandfathered in, and newly, newly-elected ones wouldn't get it, was kinda the gist of the discussion we had.
Then we should change this then, right?
Probably, it doesn't fit.
Okay.
But I just, again, I don't think we resolved it, we brought it up, so there, you know, are a couple that it would be covered, but, uh.
It doesn't matter to me one way or another, so whatever other people, what any else, input? You know, if you had, because you guys know more what the discussion was you had before, you know? But we just need to clarify it, because you know there's gonna be questions. You know, it doesn't really affect the city employees, it's more the commissioners here and what their opinion is, so. And I know there was a lot of conversation about it.
Am I crossing it off?
That's what I'm asking, Dave. Mike? Levi?
I don't believe that, uh, commissioners should necessarily get the same benefits as full-time employees.
Okay, I, I agree, I, I, I don't have a problem either way, but I would lean that way, so. But I have insurance right now, so when I don't have it, I might have a different attitude.
So, we're gonna cross that off then, Ashley?
Yep.
Okay, that one's handled, and then fourteen, I just like on resignation, I'm just thinking that maybe it says employment termination initiated by an employee who chooses to leave the city voluntarily. I'm just wondering if something in there shouldn't be, if we shouldn't put something in there about, about, uh, unemployment? That they don't qualify for, if, if anybody that resigns gives up the right for unemployment?
Going through the process, I don't believe it's up to our decision.
I don't think that's our decision.
Unfortunately.
Legally, can you do that? See?
So I can resign from a job, and I can still get unemployment?
I, it depends on the circumstances of the case, but you're not the one who decides, and the employer isn't the one who decides.
Okay, uh, and then page fifteen. Just a clarification, it says overtime shall be defined, this is about a third of the way down, overtime shall be defined as all hours worked, vacation or sick. More than forty hours per week or eight hours per day, do you guys figure that overtime, how do you do overtime on a, so if I work, I, I guess, Jim, if I work sixteen hours one day, is that, do I get eight hours overtime for that day, or if I have a day off, how does that work for you guys?
That was, that was incorporated in here to, uh, bring, bring employees back to work, say you take, uh, three hours of sick leave, and, uh, you get called out that night, you still receive overtime. The eight hours includes both regular time, sick leave and or vacation. So it's over, actually, it's anything overtime after eight.
And, and that would include any individual day?
Correct.
Okay, so, so it didn't matter if you worked?
A twenty-four hour period.
In a twenty-four hour period, so you'd get paid for it, so if you.
So work sixteen one day.
Even if you're, even if you're off a day, you still get the eight hours overtime?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted that clarified.
Normally, you're not going to work that, it's meant to bring them in if the power goes out and we need the help. Correct, to get, to get, we, with the small staff we have, it just.
Okay, I just wanted to.
It works real good.
I just wanted to clarify it, so. So if somebody asks me, I can explain it, how you guys have explained it, okay, anything up to page nineteen, I'm up to? I just wanna clarify, Jim, with you on that, on, uh, uniform allowance, if you are okay with that? On page nineteen?
I have, I have an old one out.
Does any have a new one, we can show them what he is?
That looks, that looks good to me. The five shirts, if they so choose to, um, the five shirts, uh, if you've get, because of work, you get one or two that get to the point where they're not wearable, or do they go out and buy their own then after that, or?
I think it'd be at your discretion if it wears out.
Okay.
You know, but they're gonna get five every year. So, you know, if one gets ripped, cause they go do something, then, you know, that's your, I would say it's your discretion.
And then, I don't even know if you need to put it there, but. I think that's a good idea.
We, we keep vests, if they, if they so choose, cause the majority of the guys choose to wear a vest instead of a shirt.
But those use apply.
We'll keep those on hand for them.
Okay, so you're, well, he said he sla- he supplies them, so it's not a big deal.
But otherwise, yeah, I just, I wanted to make sure it covered the boots and the coveralls, because that's what they've been getting before, for, for the weather, the extreme weather conditions.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Now, anything up to page twenty-eight, I'm gonna jump to, has anybody got between there and twenty-eight? There's nothing, what I'm, what I'm asking on here, and this is just again a clarification, it talks about use of equipment and vehicles. I know that there's been questions before about use of vehicles by the city personnel, and I just wanted to make sure how we are defining that? As far as, uh, you know, what they're available to use, I know they had talked about that before, and, and maybe Mike and Dave, cause they, and, and Levi, you know, you guys know the history maybe on that, and where, where that was, if you guys wanna.
I'm not really.
There was a motion made years ago by one of the commissioners to allow employees to use city equipment on their own time, as long as they didn't benefit from it.
I don't think it's been abused at all.
Is where it comes from. It was a, uh, opportunity to benefit for the employees to be able to use some of that equipment, they, they run it all day. As long as they weren't out making money for it, or running around the neighborhood helping, you know?
Okay, cause it, it, there might be more here than I, than what I, I didn't read at all, but it goes in, equipment, facilities and vehicles shall not be available for personal use without the commission's approval. So I'm just wondering, you know, what, what, how are we gonna, how, is that a proper way to word that, or how, do we have to add anything in there, or is it fine the way it is, or? You know, are we gonna say that, that, uh, somebody can use the payloader if they're going to, I, I don't know, you know, what an example would really be, but, you know, do we, do we have to clarify that anymore? You know, whether it be for, uh, can it solely be used for, in the, for personal use, I, I don't, I don't know, I just wanna clarify that. I don't know what your thoughts are, Terry, but.
JR, what would be the legal ramifications about liability of, uh, a worker, what's gonna, you know, what would the city be liable for if something happened, an accident, or? That's the, 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 the level of concern I have.
The question becomes who's at fault, uh, if they're using city employ, uh, equipment outside of the city's use itself, I believe it would be covered by any insurance plan we have, as it's outside of the policy coverage. So it'd be at the risk of the intended user, now if they're hurt by that equipment with the city's authority to use it, they could still sue the city for its use. It wouldn't be workers' comp, because we're saying it's outside of the work field, but still city equipment, it's a risk.
Jim, what do you think?
I, I haven't seen a problem with it, again, could someday something happen, of course it can anytime. Um, I think this is a big benefit for the guys, I would hate to see it, uh, I mean, it's not, I don't think it's abused. You know, it's, they grab something, go get something done quick, bring it back, they're done.
So, so could we just word it, equipment, facilities and vehicles, uh, shall be available for personal use? Or do we want, I'm, I'm guessing, I'm wondering, okay, what, what do you mean by commission?
I think if we took out commission and put in, um, the public works directors.
Okay, okay. Because I don't wanna go around every time somebody wants to use something, and I don't want them to have to worry about asking commissioner if they can use it, I'd rather have them talk to Jim.
And I'd also like to see, besides personal, we could add, or civics, so, for example, I know John used it to help the Boy Scouts do something one day. That type of stuff, I just don't want us to see, use the equipment for, even if they're getting paid or not, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be doing it for somebody else. Cause then it turns into, well, you did it for him, and you did it for him, and why don't you do it for me?
You're saying that they can use them for some kind, for civic help?
For civic, like Boy Scouts, or if they were gonna do something for the baseball team, or.
Or help putting something up for Hillsborough Days or something like that.
The time spent in the park, working in the park.
Yep, yep, yep.
Those type of things.
I think, yeah, I, I agree a hundred percent on that, so.
As long as it's not for some other person.
Right, right.
But do we need to have something in there that, if they are using it on, for their personal use and not a civic use, that they are using it at their own risk?
I, yeah, I.
That's already in there?
Shall be at the owner's risk.
That's personal tools.
Yeah, but that would be.
That's personal tools, that's not the city equipment, that's your own personal tools.
Then you could just change it, use of city tools and equipment shall be at the owner's, shall be at the employee's risk.
Personal use of city equipment would be at the risk of, of the employee, yep.
That would, I would think that would cover it.
You got all that, Ashley?
Use of cities will shall be at the, uh, city's risk?
Employee's risk.
Employees' risk. And that's just personal use, just to make sure that's clear, it has nothing to do with city, if, if they come out and they help, whatever. One year, I think, one of the guys came out and helped pull trailers out at the horse pole, when it was, when they had that hail. So they brought a payloader out to help, you know, so.
Years he did that.
Yep, yep, yep.
So, I have a question though, so like Julie, Sarah and I, we don't know how to operate the equipment, so are we allowed to, if we're, not saying that we would ever need this or anything, but if we were to need something done like that, would it be okay to have one of the guys do that? Because we're employees too.
I don't have a problem with it, if you can talk them into it.
So I'm just wondering, I'm just clarifying.
That's, that would be, I'm sure they'd be more than happy to.
Okay, I was just curious, not that I have any problems.
You mean like if you need a tree limb, carry it off your yard? I don't have a problem with if you got a old gem.
I, I think all this comes back to the, also, we, if it's abused, obviously, we, we, we let city employees know that if it's abused, you could lose it, so don't get carried away that way. And we haven't had that issue, so.
Keep bringing that up, don't abuse it.
You got her worded there? Okay. On, uh, I'm jumping up to thirty-four. Oh, thirty-five it is on this one. On the very bottom. I'm not really a hundred, I'm not really a hundred percent on what action, act, action, action constituting fraud?
One T out.
Just picking on you there, Ashley. Okay.
And Sarah's watching.
Sarah, just don't let it happen again.
As long as it's not line item number one.
Okay, and then, and then, one last thing I think, and then I'm done here, is, is I still, Levi, you corrected me on this, but I still don't, can you show me where it read, what to do if there's fraud by the auditor? Where did you see that? Cause we talked about if any employee or anybody, how, how, what, what the steps were, who they reported to, but I just can't find it in here, and I know you'd mentioned it to me, and I, I still can't see it. JR probably saw it right away when he was reading it.
Um, in the paragraph, the last paragraph above that.
Which one?
On that, on page thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven?
Yep, it says, um, employee or the complainant may remain anonymous, all inquiries concerning the activity under investigation for the suspected individual, his or her attorney or representative, or any inquiry should be directed to the city auditor or the city's legal counsel.
But, but doesn't it say that an employee who discovers or suspects fraudulent activity will contact the city auditor immediately? The employee or other complainant may remain anonymous, but that doesn't say what, you know, if, if you keep reading it from that previous sentence, am I reading it wrong, JR?
What page are you on?
I'm on page thirty-six, the very bottom on thirty-six, it says, an employee who discovers or suspects fraudulent activity will contact city audi- auditor immediately, the employee or other complaint will remain anonymous. That tells me that, that tells me that if I, but it doesn't tell me if, it, it, that, is that talking about the person that contacted the auditor? That they would remain anonymous?
May.
Or no?
It says may remain anonymous, yep.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, is, was, what I'm, what I'm asking is, it talked about the city auditor immediately, and what does it say in here, that I, that if I have a problem with that, with a suspicion of Ashley, it doesn't say? Who to, who do I go to?
Would it be legal counsel?
No, it says in the sentence, like you say, an employee who discovers or suspects fraudulent activity will contact the city auditor. At that point, the city auditor, because she's got the budget in the books, she would probably initiate it.
No, no, no.
I don't know, like if.
Yep, I, I know, but it's not specifically in here, the employee or other complainant may remain anonymous. So, that's just saying if it reports to her, I don't see anything in here. Suspected individual or her, his or her attorney or representative, um, should be directed to the city auditor or the city's legal counsel, so the only other thing you'd be able to do is go to the city attorney.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is, is, if I'm reading this, I want something that says, if I have, if Julie or Sarah suspect fraudulent activity, what are, what do they do, obviously, they can't go to the auditor, so basically I want.
Legal counsel, or the city's legal counsel, you have two choices.
It also says right here on the next one, it says, do not contact the suspected individual in the effort to determine facts or demand restitution, but it also, that's where it would say, you know, you're supposed to go to the city auditor, but then it also refers to the city attorney in there. So you wouldn't go to the auditor.
That's as clear as mud to me, but if you guys all see it?
Cause basically, it just says that the city auditors for administering revisions, interpretation and application of it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, guys, I've just read it, I don't get it, but you guys do, so that's the important thing, I just don't think it's really clear. Uh, I don't have anything else, if everybody else is good.
Since we're talking about it, what would you recommend?
Well, I'm, I'm just think, basically, if, if an employee has a suspect, suspects fraudulent activity by the auditor, they would report to the, the, the mayor. they would report to the, the mayor, the city attorney. So it would be more specifically to, if I had a problem with Ashley, who would I go talk to?
The city attorney.
Right, and that's what I, and that's what I'm just saying, if, if you have, if, if a employee of Hillsborough suspects fraudulent activity by the auditor, they would be, they would contact the city attorney. Then, to me, that's, that's clear, if I have an issue with them, you know. And you guys see that, I don't, but, so, but that would make it clear to, to me, so. But if you guys all see that, and JR, JR's the more important one, if he sees it, then we don't have to, if he doesn't need to, think it needs to be clarified.
The or kind of signifies, I think, in there. The auditor or legal counsel, the or kind of signifies. If I were the one that was the suspected abuser, they wouldn't come to me, they'd go to JR or John.
And most likely, if it's anybody but her, you'd probably go to both, you'd probably go to Ashley and the city attorney. Because that's what you're gonna do.
I, I, that's everything I had in my notes, I believe, so, so we can move on from that, unless you wanted to, I guess, if you want to make the changes, and then look at it, or whatever, how do you guys want to pursue it, as far as approval of it, and? Go, you had something, Levi?
I would make a motion to add this in, based off of Jim's recommendation, that, we give the employees a two-dollar raise for water treatment, water distribution, wastewater treatment, and wastewater distribution. Each would be two-dollar raise if they meet the classification needed for our city. And half that amount while they have started the process and working towards it. Meaning, if they started with the class one, got that, they would get a dollar, and continue to get that dollar until they got to the class three.
So you just want to skip the fifty cents?
Right, because I think we should incentivize that, we don't want them to stay at a one or a two, we want them to move all the way up, right? So they continue at it, if that makes sense.
I guess what I looked at is, you total all these up, minus the class three operator, you're talking seven dollars, okay. Now that I don't want to give them more, but, I mean, you get somebody that shoots through this, and all of a sudden, he's making more than any of the other guys that are working there. I, I don't know what's fair, I guess.
But I also look at it, that that person has went to go get those other things, so that's where I don't have an issue with it. And then, also on it, I would add that any current employee that has any of these classifications, it would go into effect in their February paycheck.
Um, I think there's only one other operator, and I, if I remember right, he was compensated for his certification. But, um, it's up to you.
That'll be a good incentive.
I think we need to incentivize, and I think we need to, um, we're gonna start losing out, I mean, if we're starting at eighteen, nineteen dollars an hour, yes, we have benefits and all those other things, but if we don't start adding more in now, for the future, we're gonna run into problems. And, um, because you can go at a target and start working at seventeen or nineteen dollars. You can go to Menards at full-time, I think is eighteen bucks an hour, so, plus benefits, so. You know, to have an employee to come in and only get a dollar or two, I, I think we just need to incentivize, because two dollars a year, yeah, it seems a lot on there right now, but over the course of the year, it's not that much.
Walk me through one more time, Jim, you said seven dollars an hour increase if they went through all the certification?
I, I took the class three out, because when it comes to a class three water treatment certification, you're gonna, you're gonna, it, it's, it's a whole different animal, I mean, you're, it's a, test is, is more, is a tougher test.
What are you?
I'm a class three.
You're a three. So we should still keep the class three, right?
Yes, but what I'm saying is, the reason I wrote minimum in there is there is because at one point, you might be negotiating, and you might, you might not get an operator coming in here for just a two-dollar raise, or, or in-house. You might end up, my guess is, if you go out of house, you're gonna probably pay somebody what I'm getting paid to run that water plant. So, what I'm saying is, that's, so I took that out, I just added everything up, and it comes, if you get through all those, you're at an extra seven dollars. If you want to do.
Because how long, I guess I didn't realize, how big a test is it? Because we're gonna have to have somebody to take over for you.
Correct, you're either gonna have to have somebody in-house that get that class three, or you're gonna have to hire somebody with a class three.
Well, I would think, if, if you could have more than one too, you never know.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
You know, so by doing this incentive, you could maybe, you maybe could get to.
Ideally, is you want someone of class three that has what they call, uh, the DRC, Direct Responsible Charge, they have the final say. And to have two other operators under there with a class one, or one with a class one, one with a class two is ideal, because they just, they know more.
Right, yep.
I guess, uh.
Because it looks like you'd need.
And the water treatment is the big one, I mean, if you wanted to go a dollar there, the other ones are fine, I mean, I just.
So, I would change it then, sorry, you can re- nix that whole thing. I'll try it again. I didn't realize that, Jim, how bad it. So then I would say, um, for water distribution, wastewater treatment, wastewater distribution, it would be two dollars to hit the class that we, that we need for our city, and then half that amount for any other classes below that, or if they've started it. For water treatment, I would recommend, or a move that we get, give a class three operator ten dollars an hour more, and class two operators, five dollars more an hour, and a class one, two dollars more an hour. And anybody that has those would go into effect in our February pay period.
What do you think, Jim, is that?
And what about the other ones?
So, the other ones, if you had a class one water distribution, they get a dollar, class two would get two dollars.
Okay, you're gonna go dollar increments then on the, the other three.
Yep.
Um, so this would be a dollar, this would be another dollar, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's just basically a dollar for each one of these?
So I got it, two, five, ten for water treatment, one, two for water distribution, one for wastewater treatment, and one, two for the wastewater distribution?
Correct.
Okay.
But, I'm just looking at, you have somebody come in, and all of a sudden, um, in three years, they get their class three. Well, they're gonna be making, so they'll get a seventeen-dollar increase in that three years?
No, it'd be two dollars, five or ten, it's not.
That would be total.
Total, yep.
So if they were, if they were at a class two and went to three, they'd only receive five dollars. Okay, that makes more sense, okay. Not that I wouldn't love to give it to them, I just.
Commissioners, what do you think?
I think that's, that'd be, that's good, yep.
So, we need to have a motion?
I made the motion.
You made the motion? Do we have a second of the new price increases, uh?
I'll second it.
Mike seconds, any more discussion?
Uh, can we just clarify one more time for the water distribution and the water treatment?
Water treatment will start at two.
Okay.
And when they receive their class two, they'll go to five, not an extra five, they'll go from two to five.
On water treatment, or, okay, okay.
And then for five to ten.
Okay.
All the other three, you'll start at a dollar, and then each step will just increase another dollar.
So if we hired a new employee to come in with a class three, we'd be, I think we started nineteen or eighteen, so it'd be ten dollars above that.
And that's about what you're gonna have to pay someone to get, it's gonna be over, it'd be close to thirty dollars to get it. You might even have to pay that to get a class two in here. And they, and you can hire someone and request them, okay, we'll hire you as a class two, you have three years to complete your class three. And the health department, I mean, they're not, they're not police, they'll, they'll work with the city. It's, it's like they'll shut everything down when I walk out the door. They'll work with you and, and the best they can, and time-wise, to set you up, so eventually you will have that.
If you were to present this to your employees, how many of them are gonna take advantage of it, you think?
I would say maybe one.
Maybe one.
Maybe a second one, but.
That's, that's, my only concern is, you know, if you start getting five people that are, you know, you know, that's maybe a little bit overkill, and, you know, from that aspect too, you know, so we don't, you know, if we're gonna, you know, you know, I don't know how many cities that would have a class three water treatment, five of them on board, you know, in a small town, you know, so.
Right, right now, I would say, well, the.
Because, and I don't, I don't.
It's also, it's also a, um.
Some are retiring, so I don't think they're.
Well, I just, you know, because you, obviously, you're budgeted for, for employee wages for this year, you know.
But it's also, you look at it, Paul, that this, these individuals now have something to work towards. You know, we have now set above and beyond standards, they're not in a position now where they come in and the only raise they're gonna get is what we give annually, if we give that, you know. That was part of the reason when we hired Ashley, that I asked that we put in that bonus if she were to get her four-year degree, because that incentivizes, if they want to do it, that they have somewhere to work towards.
You know, Paul, maybe you could cover it by, by running it through the supervisor, okay? I've got her to have a class two, um, I got another guy that wants to come in and get his class two, and someone that will sit back and say, well, you know, we really don't need another class two. It's up to, if you wanna, you wanna go for it, go for it. I don't know if you'll be compensated for it, I, I don't know if that's the proper way to do it either.
I don't, I.
I see your point.
Yeah.
Right now, it's not gonna be a problem, but, you know, ten years from now, it could be.
No.
I don't know.
Not to say that it would be a bad problem, but.
No.
But it, uh, you know, yeah. I just had the questions, so.
Okay, any other discussion?
But it, it is a good incentive, definitely, I mean, the, the, I think the guys have just been sitting, letting somebody else take care of it during these years, so.
And we, and we do that in my line of business. If I have, if I have fifteen internet classes that I want you to take in the mechanics, I will raise your wage this much, you know, that's, it, it works in our business that way too, for educate, for training.
The other thing that you have to keep in mind, that's unfortunate, is that, you know, if we got them up to a class three, they may look at it and say, well, I can go to Fargo or Grand Forks, and there's an opening, and I can get paid X dollars an hour more, and now we're back in the same situation again. So, this is, I think it has a proactive.
Don't put the ideals in their heads, JR.
Is there any reason they could come back and approach the council and say, you know, I have this classification I have, have an offer for somewhere else for this, would you be willing to keep me here? So, but I think this is a good starting point to see if we can get some, somebody in-house to.
Okay, so we've had the discussion. Mike?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Okay, the only question I have going forward is if we want to accept everything into the, uh, you know, the employee handbook, but where is the employee acknowledgement form gonna reside? Is it gonna be in your portfolio, Ashley and Jim gonna have them, or, you know, because here, basically, we're asking the employees to go through the handbook and make sure that they, they read it and sign it, so this document is important.
It says down at the bottom, it said, it's, uh, the form must return to the city auditor's office.
I would assume it would go in their file, or?
In their personnel file.
Got it? So you're gonna ask them to take and do this then when we get it done, okay?
Do you want all of the employees?
Well, that's what it says, right?
Yeah, because we've made changes, so they need to look at it.
Yeah, because it's been updated.
Okay, so now, do we want to entertain a motion to take and accept all the changes and finalize the, uh, the employee handbook?
I'll make the motion.
Dave makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mike seconds, any other discussion? Let's see, Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Levi?
I'm only voting no for the one section that I have disagreements about. No.
And Paul?
Yes.
Okay, and a yes for me. Okay, moving on to my other old business. Okay, do you want to take and talk about the, uh, the beautification tickets, or do you want to wait till the next commission meeting for that?
We don't have anything really on it, unless JR has anything that they've moved forward on, on those two, um, as far as the two that we're working on legal action with.
Well, I do have a question on number two. I know that in the teams that I've now joined, a part of it, there were some status updates out there, working on, I believe, an eviction, as well as status improvements for ticket number two, item number seven point three. Have you received any other updates on that?
No, that is not the one that they were being evicted from, that was the one next to it.
Okay, so that one is still pending and should still proceed. Okay, on that one, uh, very good, and then the next one for number four, I do have a letter ready to go out, to be sent uh, to the owner of that address for a final deadline, and then after that, we'll be contracting to remove and take care of items, but one final notice to be personally delivered to them.
Okay.
Is, which one is the eviction on?
It's not on here.
It's not on here, okay.
The, the beautification commission didn't pass it on because of that, because it was on, we noticed that, so we didn't pass it on.
Is there a chance that this shouldn't be ticket number two then?
That's number two. Correct, it should be ticket number one.
Okay, now that makes more sense, okay. Well, we will proceed with both tickets then.
So seven three, seven point three should be ticket twenty, twenty-one, two, zero, zero, one, not zero, zero, two.
Okay.
And that's on second street, or first street?
This says second street southeast.
Second street southeast, yep.
That's on here?
No, it's in the commission, don't, beautification commission.
So, no other actions need to be taken, you got the letter, okay?
And I don't believe on zero seven, we've heard any communication from the owner of that property, right, correct, Ashley?
No, you're talking about.
Uh, no, zero seven.
No.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Um, the only other thing on seven four, I did find out that, um, we had, we had said that the water and power had been turned back on, but the power had been turned back on, not the water. Oh, I couldn't remember if we did say that last time. Correct, and I do see that resident is also on the disconnect list. That would be it for those.
Perfect, moving on to, uh, seven six, building permit process, Mike?
Okay, we had, uh, we had one contractor come to the P and Z meeting, and, um, his one complaint was probably due to older internet access, and since that, uh, happened, he has looked again, and it seemed to be that everything was, had gotten straightened out on that, so. I guess as far as complaints there, I'm sure there's probably some other ones out there, but they didn't show up. So, the only other thing is, we talked about the building permit process, possibly doing some changes where maybe uh, planning and zoning could take care of the older part of town, unless there's a new house that comes up or something, and let Mike Levins take care of all the new houses out there. It would, it would, uh, clear up a lot of, uh, controversy with, uh, who's doing what, and, you know. If, if, if somebody's gonna add an addition on their house, I'd be fine with Mike Levins doing it. You know, if somebody wants to put in a garden shed, I don't know, personally, I think we can handle that, but that's, uh, one of the things we brought up, and. that's, uh, one of the things we brought up and bring it to you and something to think about anyway, we got some time here, so.
Yeah, I think that it was a good exchange of ideas and, uh, you know, going forward, so would you like to table this then and have more discussion?
Yeah, I think everybody can think about it.
Is there a?
Go from there.
Excuse me, I think it'd be good to have the P and Z have a formal, you know, what the actual changes they want. And if we could see that written down, I think that would be good.
Was it a timing thing why you only had one contractor there or just not?
I don't know.
Just didn't?
I talked to several others and even a couple times on one and.
Yeah, I kinda thought there'd be a couple more coming too, but they, they didn't show up.
So, they didn't show up? Don't come to me.
Okay, so Levi will take and work in kinda documenting some of those changes that we would like to do and keeping it as simple as possible.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
I can do that.
Uh, any other questions or? Uh, so we'll table that one, Ashley, and we'll go on to seven point seven, liquor license process revamping.
Um, so the only thing that I had, we had presented this before, and so it was more of the application process just, cause we kinda have several different applications, several different things. So this application would be for everybody. It's one application for everything and it's just kind of a checkbox type thing that, um, to do so, but you know, the, the first page is pretty self-explanatory and then it would say if it's a new liquor license renewal or transfer. If it's a transfer, then they fill out that section, if it's a newer renewal, they'd fill out the next section. And then it also has on page three, basically what is needed for the application. That way everything's turned in for the attachment. And then the last thing on page four is basically a checkbox saying that the agreement, and that is in our ordinance, and that was one thing that we didn't have on our new liquor license application process, cause part of that and even the renewal process is, um, especially number seven that is allowing, uh, not number seven. Number five on there, it's giving authorization for the health department, the sheriff department's order or designees to go in and check at any time.
John had sent me an email about this, um, and he has two suggestions and he said he thinks Levi's done a good job on what he has sent out, um, two of his suggestions were as follows. Um, and this is what John had wrote to me, I do not think that eight point zero six zero nine is written to require a public hearing on a liquor license application, I think the reference to the hearing means the discussion the city commissioners have regarding the items referred to in eight point zero six zero nine. And then his other, his second suggestion is, um, he would suggest that liquor transfer application and listing of required documents be combined. If the transfer info is combined, the rest of the work with, the rest of the work with all the applicable to new or renewal license applications. I would suggest you and your staff consider my suggestions and discuss yours and make any recommendations for revision to the commission. So that's what John had sent me in an email, do you wanna see it?
We do need to add, uh, number twelve to, uh, page, we don't have the brew pub on here, you have it in the as part of the, uh, you know, the fee structure, but we don't have it actually on the ordinance. Uh, what page is it, so page eight dash sixteen, number twelve, where you should have a brew pub or, uh, license.
Where's that?
I don't know where the references.
We approved it quite a few commission meetings ago that we added the twelve.
Trying to figure out where. It was on the application where he was referring to it.
No, it, you have it, you have it, uh, on that little.
He's still looking at John's stuff.
Oh, oh.
Two different items.
You know what I'm saying, Ashley? Or is that, he's just referring to the liquor, the actual ordinance?
Do you know where John was referring to the hearing?
I don't, cause I was looking through there and I didn't see it either, but I was just going off of his email.
Okay.
That he sent me.
Which is just, that's just referring to the city reviewing the application, I think, I don't know if it's referencing this application, so.
I think what he's meaning is so that the mean, we move the additional documents, page maybe where this is at. Is that a listed at the end?
Do you mean put it on here?
Right, so just, we'd move additional documents needed for this application for the transfer. He's saying, let's put it in the transfer section, so it's not.
Oh, okay.
Cause then you wouldn't need. And technically, if we made this a new page, then you could just do a signature page for that section. Or however, but I think as long as moving stuff around, I don't think this is gonna make a big deal, it's just what we have on here is what we need.
Right.
Um, and I didn't put brew pub, cause I didn't know what it was at that time, when I did this, or it's on here. Or no, it's not brew pub, it's brew.
He, Terry's talking about on this part, in the ordinances, it's not on this part of the ordinance, right, Terry, that's what you're talking about?
Which is approved.
You have it here, you got the fee, but you don't have the twelve, the license.
It wasn't, I don't know if they're updated online yet.
They're not. It's an end of year project, update all the ordinances with all the stuff from twenty twenty-one, right? So it is approved, it's, we have a final, it's just, we haven't updated all the.
Right.
Right.
Ordinances yet.
What do you mean by the description of the event on this page? Is that the transfer, if we're gonna go outside the building like we do at the street dance?
Or if they're gonna go somewhere out, just basically drawing where they're at and what they're doing. And like I said before, when we did this, it was just basically to make things a little bit more simplified, so if somebody grabs it, they know exactly what they need to do.
I think it's four percent instead of one percent. You don't need to take in, uh, if you're for the state license, I think it's four percent.
Which one?
So on S F N ten eight sixty-six for the state, for every person with one or more percent of stake in the business, I think it's four percent is the minimum.
Are you looking on which page, Terry?
Uh, application page three, this one here. So new application, uh, S F N ten eighty-six for every person with one or more percent of stake in the business, and I think if I remember correctly, the state says four percent. A federal one is, is, uh, either eight or ten percent.
It might have changed, but, um, thought Ashley had it in here. It might have been an old application I was looking at, but here it says five percent.
Yep, so, but, so if I have a partner that's one percent, I'm not required to put it on the state.
What I was saying is that that was what I was on the form when I looked at it last time. The form may have changed, is what I'm saying. We could just take out, just put S F N four eight one zero eight six six and that takes care of it, and then we don't list it.
So just cross this for every person, cross it out?
But it might have been, hold on. I, now I know what it was, so if you go to eight seventeen in this packet under eight point zero six zero seven, one A, relisted as one percent. So I was just following what our ordinances said, not what the state ordinance said, or the state head said.
So we need to change that to five percent?
We could, we could, or we could leave it as is, it's up to us.
Well, that specifically is addressing a corporation, so.
Correct.
Doesn't fit for me anyway, so.
Correct.
And if we're looking into changing the brew pub, you know, I'll have a federal brewing license that I'll have on premises also, so I don't know if you need to specify that when we do the, uh, the license change. It's kinda enumerated in the, the brew pub.
So we're just gonna cross that part out, right?
We can't yet because we'd have to have two readings of our ordinance change.
Right, I know, I'm just for my own notes, so I know what eventually is gonna come off here.
Well, but it's.
No, I meant the application.
Right, I know what you mean, but if we change it, they would look at S F N one zero eight zero six six and say they'd need it at five, but our ordinance says one. So that's why I wrote it in there.
And if you wanna leave it for a corporation, like I say, it, it's still not gonna affect me.
I'm just following what our ordinance says, Terry. I'm not.
But just to be clear, we can go ahead and add the twelfth license because we went through the process and we went through two commissions and two readings to take and do that, so I think it's appropriate if you wanna take and make the change. Do you wanna motion to take and accept this package or do you wanna tweak it?
That's up to you guys, if you wanna accept it or tweak it.
I, I, I have no clue what this is, it's the first time I've seen it, so I haven't a chance to read it, I'd prefer to read it, but.
So I hear that we should probably table it and bring it up at the next commission meeting?
I would prefer, but that, I would prefer because I've, I haven't seen this, so I haven't had a chance to read it and I'm not a speed reader, so.
No, I, this is the first time I've seen it.
Well, it's not the first time you've seen it, we did it before.
Yeah, it was actually at a commission meeting in your pack, not Paul's.
Not Paul's, Paul wasn't here at that time.
Right, but everybody else's it was on shortly after November tenth.
And I just would like to go through and.
Yep, so we'll table the, uh, discussion on that.
And when you, if you're, you were talking about something changing, can you, and you talked about something that, that John put out? Can you share that information or can you share what's, what you're trying to change here, what, what's going on?
Send the email of John's, forward it to the commissioners.
What, what is changing, you're, you're changing something, right?
Nothing here. Nothing, nothing on the application, or, it's nothing on our actual ordinance.
Okay.
It's only on.
The yellow highlight?
The, this, the new application.
Okay, and it's just whatever's highlighted in yellow is what you're changing?
No.
No, this is a whole new application.
Oh, it's a whole new application?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Completely different.
Okay.
Basically, we didn't have any forms really that we were using, so this.
We do, but not for the brew pub, and so trying to make it so everything's all under one application versus.
And now do, and do this, the bars go through this application every year or just when they open?
Every year.
Every year, okay.
Or they go through renewal.
Renewal process.
And that's what you're talking about here or no?
It's all three, so it'd be, this would be a, a transfer, a renewal, or a new application.
Right, and right now we have three separate ones, and so Levi is trying to simplify it into one.
Right.
Okay.
And then also just have what is needed when you turn it in, so.
Well, I'll, I'll read it and then if I got questions, Levi, I'll get ahold of you.
So nothing's changing on here.
But take and send out John's email to all the commissioners so we can take and read his recommended changes.
Sounds good.
That good?
Yep, let's hold off.
Okay, moving on to seven eight, food truck ordinance, uh, five twenty-eight update.
I'll move for a first reading of ordinance five twenty-eight.
We have a motion for the first reading of ordinance five twenty-eight, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Dave seconds, any discussion after, uh, we've talked about this at the last commission meeting?
Everything, so you're saying what the changes that are on here?
Changes that are in there, yep.
And one that I had a question on.
And we do have to have one more reading.
Correct.
Just on one on, uh, and this is just, uh, it's on eight point one zero zero seven, general regulations. Would there ever be, number seven, would there ever be a, a ti- a time when a food truck would be in a residential area for any reason? Cause it doesn't say anything about a residential, industrial, commercial, C two, highway, commercial district? It's a C two.
C two, I believe, is along Caledonia, like the gas stations and Dollar General there, I believe.
And I'm just asking that, I don't know.
I don't think they can be.
Well, I'm just saying, it, it just says that, so I'm saying if, is there any, does anybody know of an instance where it would be in a residential area?
I think if I remember right, we talked about this and I would go back to, if they wanted to do it outside of any of this, Ashley would have to bring it to the commission for approval, where this is standard, anybody could come in and do it.
Correct.
So they automatically could come in and be on any one of those zones, but if they needed, if they wanted to go, let's say the church is gonna have it, well, that's a residential zone, so they'd have to come ahead of time to get the application approved.
And I just wanna make sure that this doesn't include an ice cream truck, this ordinance. If somebody wanted to open up with a, an ice cream truck and go through residential areas, I just wanna make sure that this ordinance doesn't cover that.
I don't know, what's the difference between a food truck and an ice cream truck?
My question would be, does a ice cream truck be, get licensed by the North Dakota Department of Health?
I don't know, should be.
I would presume this ordinance would cover it based on how it's drafted.
Well, then the residential areas should be, should be written so that, uh, residential area, cause that's where everybody would go with an ice cream truck.
I don't think an ice cream truck would be.
I, I don't know.
Well, I think it depends on what type of ice cream it would be, if it's a ice cream truck that's just handing out prepackaged things, they're not making the food there.
Right. But they still have to be inspected.
Not necessarily.
I think for cooling and stuff, you do. I just wanna make sure.
Well, I, I do too, that's why I.
Well, I, I do too, that's why I don't wanna. I'm sorry I missed that last time.
So do we wanna take and talk about that at the next reading, or do we wanna actually make a change here? I see J R and Levi are both looking.
I think we maybe should check on the legality of it, if, if, what the differences are.
If we wanted to exempt it, we could just make a blanket exception for ice cream trucks.
That'd be the easiest.
That would be the easiest, cause then I don't have to look into it, see how they're defined, and do all the footwork.
So, J R, where would, where would you make that exception at?
If that's what we want to accept. I, well, wherever you guys would like to, I could almost put in the definitions at the first, at the very first beginning there.
Okay.
And just put a special line saying this ordinance should not cover anything commonly regarded as an ice cream truck.
Unless they're making the ice cream in there.
Correct, correct, well, I could, ice cream trucks selling prepackaged food items.
Well, could, could we just, could we just change?
Ice cream cones, you know, you're.
Could we just add into that number seven, that, that anything, anything outside of that scope basically would have to be brought, could be presented to the city commission and?
Yes, I can add that.
Maybe that might be, that way we don't, we don't leave anything out, they just have to come and talk to us, and if they say, hey, I'm gonna run a ice cream truck, well, then we can.
That works as well.
We can approve it or not.
So ice cream truck on seven?
And that way it doesn't, and that way it doesn't, that way pertains to just more than an ice cream truck, it also would pertain, if we ever did have something, like you said, the church, if they were to set up something across the street and residential, they could ask for permission for that, and then we could, and then that would be, it would give them a way to, to do it, but they'd still have, and that, but they still have to come to the city.
Right, so that's another option that is, just go to, uh, eight point one zero zero seven, number seven, and put an exception is, uh, all other areas must be approved by the city commission, or all other.
I'm okay with that.
Zones.
Covers what I'm concerned about, so, okay.
That's the only thing I had on that.
So now do we need to make a motion and approval of the first reading and?
Are you okay with that, Levi?
I'm okay with that change, I just think that a.
Schedule the second reading?
I still don't think a food truck is, or an ice cream truck is under a food truck, because food trucks came in after ice cream trucks. And.
I don't, I don't either, so.
That'd be like saying Casey's can't sell ice cream out of their machine without getting health inspected.
I don't know.
But they probably are.
They're health inspected for other things, but yeah, I don't think it's considered as a food truck, though, that's just my opinion.
Well, there might be entrepreneurs out there that wanna do an ice cream truck, and before you hear that little ringing, everybody comes running.
Do we have to, did you make a motion on this?
I, yeah, I made a motion, and I said without a.
And then second, we're just waiting for our call.
And we're doing discussion, and so the discussion would include that change then, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, let's see.
But you have that change.
Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Okay, moving on to new business, Valley News Live. I say since we're kinda had some other big ones, is this time critical, can we table this and bring it up next commission meeting?
We can bring it up next, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're not, we're not.
I haven't had a chance to really look at it.
Unless you wanted to advertise in the Olympics, it's not.
And that's pretty crazy, so.
So we'll go ahead and table that, bring it up the next commission meeting, uh, eight point two, remark, technology, renewal.
Yep.
I'll move to approve the renewal for remark.
And Ashley, what do you have on this?
It's just the, the annual renewal, everything's the same as twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Levi had a motion.
Dave make?
What?
Levi had a motion.
Oh, did you?
I didn't hear you, Levi, I apologize.
Okay, so Levi made the motion, Dave, I assume you seconded it?
That's cause of his booming voice.
Yeah, I'll second his motion.
Okay, and now we'll start out, uh, Levi.
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Snow removal ordinance that Steve, uh, I think had a valid point, uh, we did bring it up, Steve, uh, the last commission meeting, uh, I would just like to follow up that, uh, to make that a standard operating procedure, that, uh, the city pushes it out, that, uh, you know, the citizens of Hillsborough during a blizzard or a snow event are responsible for making sure that the, uh, the vehicles are removed from the streets so that the street cleaning can proceed, uh, and then, uh, the process doesn't have to go through the sheriff's department to go out and mark and make the notification for six, it'll just be a standard, standard, uh, operating procedure that, uh, the citizens will be responsible for off-street parking, uh, during snow events, basically, so, did I capture that right?
Do we have to, go ahead, Steve. Well, I, I personally was, I, cause I was brought that we were gonna, we had to do something with this ordinance, correct, but you couldn't enforce it, or it was hard to enforce?
Very hard to enforce, it brings two different ways to do the situation.
I, I think we need to, we, we need to get, somebody needs to rewrite it then, we get together with Steve or somebody, so we know what we're talking about, what we wanna change, and I thought that's what, I thought John was gonna be doing that, or getting together with Steve.
They were working on it.
They were working on it, so I don't know if they, you know, you don't know if John got, if you guys got, met, did you and me with John to go through this at all, Steve? Yeah, I think we need to wait and.
But the other thing we talked about, and Steve and I talked a little bit one day too about it, is that, you know, when we're asking the sheriff's department to tag these vehicles, they're also out in the storm trying to deal with all this stuff, so Jim, would you guys be okay with having tags in the vehicles, in your guys' vehicles, and tagging them and just keeping track? And then you can forward any issued ones on to Steve, cause it is in there that we can do that, just a matter of not whether, and it's not that you have to write the ticket out, you just have to do like the sheriff's department does, I think it's just a blanket sticker, isn't it, that you put on there?
For the most part, we, 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 now, it's called a full galvanic vehicle tag, uh, it's more of an education for the, the vehicle owners right now, so we go out there, we put the tag on it, and whoever buys it, we flag that vehicle as a problem, and we can get it moved, um, as a result, we get a lot of nasty phone calls, whatever, which is fine, but that's the only way I'm allowed to alert those people that they need to move that vehicle. If you can do, as Terry was saying, and alert the citizens, you know, somehow your notification system will have to bring, um, well, what, what Levi has been doing too is, you know, when, when the city's out trying to clear the, the streets in the snow and whatnot, it's also the same time that we're out pulling cars up and ditches and handling crashes and that kind of stuff, so, you know, I don't have a problem with my department going around putting tags on vehicles, or if we get to that point, if we got towed vehicles or whatever the case is, but you gotta understand too, that there's gonna be a time line in there, from the time the snow event happens, and you gotta try to clear the streets, and we'll, 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 we'll do all that.
And I think there was a six hour in one of the, the ordinances too that talked about, uh, the tagging, so that was another lagging factor, that again, if we make, if we push the responsibility on to the citizens, and we set the standard that we expect them to remove the vehicles off the streets, uh, for clearing, and, uh, I saw some today, Jim, that we just went around, and the semi, for example, out there on the highway, uh, you, you're not gonna take and tow a semi, but, you know, again, there was a few that were in the residential areas when I was driving around today that, uh, that were, were there, but.
So what's your procedure now, Steve, I mean, as far as timeline, what, what, do you wait so long after the snow event, or do you wait till you have time, or wha- what do you do now?
Every city is different, um, some, some cities say within twenty-four hours of, of the end of the snow event, some say within twelve hours of the, the snow event, uh, what's, what's realistic for the city, for us, you know, it's that first four to six hours after a snow, that we're pretty much tied up, that's when traffic's starting to move, and that's when we're starting to deal with it, um, hot and heavy for us, so I would say that six to eight hours after a snow event, you know, we're gonna be the busiest, so if we could go eight hours after the, the snow event, that would work fine.
So what we need is to sit down and figure out what the best timeframe would be.
Correct.
And then who's either or, who's gonna do it, because we're the, basically the same thing, after the event, thirty-six hours, we're, and that's when the guys, you gotta put sleep in there too. So, um, but I think it just needs to be written someplace so that they're, at so much time after the event, or when we start, that they should be marked.
Absolutely, and, and, you know, you know it as well as I, that you guys, you know, depending on the snow, there's obviously, you know, some of the worst out there, but a lot of time you guys are going around cars, and then on your second, third pass, and that's when you're cleaning up with cars or stuff.
And, and the worst ones are the chronic ones where they don't move for a week, you know, or.
And that's the place where we consider to work together as far as taking care of it.
And that's why, that's why even up to two days, cause that's, it isn't two days where we actually go and start cleaning around these vehicles, then at that point, and then what's the time on the, you said a forty hour, what does that mean?
Forty-eight hour, so basically two days' time.
Within two days, they have to have that vehicle moved?
Yep.
Okay.
What if?
Or if you use Fargo as an example, they have twenty-four hours, and then they come in and tow.
What if we, um, created our own ticket for Hillsborough, that, and our ordinance would say to the example of twenty-four hours after the snow event, all vehicles must be moved on the streets of Hillsborough, after that point, they will be tagged, and they have twenty-four hours from the time that it's been tagged to move the vehicle, so if Jim or one of the guys, um, say, well, it stops snowing right now, and they have to tell tomorrow, so then the next day, they go around and tag them, and they just date and tag, put on the tag, and say you need this vehicle moved by X amount of time, these, the guys can keep a logbook of where the vehicle's at, license, whatever, you can decide that, and then we know that it's logged at that point, and then we can work with the sheriff's department to get them towed and whatever else, that way it's not, it's specific to our snow event and not a abandoned vehicle tag.
Yep, and I think that it keeps it simple, and I think that that's the gist of what we would do then, so, but let's get together and kinda write up.
Yeah, because.
Kind of a synopsis of what was mentioned, and.
We could get everything down on paper that says the time and, and what we do, it's getting them out there.
I don't, I don't think the city has.
Which is, for us, is, is probably the biggest issue, is taking the time, who's gonna go out there and do it, cause I'm not gonna, if they're coming down the street cleaning the snow, I'm not gonna say, well, stop, hop out, take that vehicle, we need to come back at a certain point and do that, when we have time to do it, and that's, that's, I think, what more the issue is, is who's got time sooner to do that?
Absolutely, and like I said, six or eight hours after the event, it should be fine.
When, what that comes down to, I mean, uh, do we look at then asking somebody else to come in and help us with that, cause you guys aren't gonna have time, then, what I'm hearing, and they necessarily don't have a lot of time.
They have time, they said after six, eight hours, they'd have time.
Okay, what happens when there's, like, the other day, and he's got a, an MCI situation with the interstate shut down?
Is it possible that Steve makes a call to Jim and says, you know, we're, we can't get anybody out there, you got some ish, uh, vehicles, have at it, I mean, I don't have a problem with that either, but.
And again, I think the twenty-four hour timeline, when we're concentrating on the initial snow removal, gives us a chance to, not only for the sheriff's department to, uh, catch up, but, you know, I, I, I still think that we need to take and socialize that it's the responsibility of the citizens to get their vehicles off the street, because if, we get another big snowstorm, there's a couple of vehicles, you're never gonna get out of there, cause there's gonna be a drift around them, basically, with the new plow.
I like the twenty-four hour also, I mean, there's no reason why they can't.
And then we tow after, you know, that twenty-four hour grace period, we can take and figure out what, what we have to do.
I'm just wondering, you know, we can't say twenty-four hours, and then we're gonna tow, we gotta have something, and you can't say that we're gonna push it out on social media, whatever else, not, somebody could claim and say that they never had that, I mean, when you put the physical tag on that vehicle, that then signifies that that's your next, that's the next notice that you have, if you didn't get it in another way, that tag on the vehicle is the notice that you need to move it.
With the addendum that, again, when you're out plowing today was a perfect example, when you get your car sitting on the side of the road, and they gotta plow around you, you're gonna get a hell of a time getting it out, so again, I want the impression that it, we have to push the responsibility down to the citizens to make sure that they're parking their vehicles off the streets as much as possible, the semi was a perfect example, you, it just couldn't move today, so, but let's go ahead and write something down, make it simple, we'll bring it back, Steve, and make sure that, uh, it fits for you, so Jim, Ashley, you and I, and then we'll get together with either J R or John, and kind of look at the legality side of it. Okay, any other questions or discussion? Moving on to eight point four, transfer the Riverwalk Fund to the Riverwalk Debt Fund for bond interest payments, Ashley?
Okay, so on the bond, there was built in, um, the hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-six cents was built into the bond for the three-year interest payments that are deferred for the special assessments, um, and I just need a motion to take that one hundred and eighty-six thousand two forty-one forty-six and move it from the construction fund into the Riverwalk Debt Fund that we had to set up. Um, we were told that we had to create a separate fund and keep these funds in there to make sure that we had those funds available to make the interest payments when they come due for the bond. And it's just until special assessments start, but like, like I said, those were deferred for three years, so this is just the money set aside to do that, so I just need the okay to take it out of the Riverwalk Construction Fund, it's already built in, it's already budgeted in dollar spreadsheets, um, John Laurie already knows about it, it just needs to be moved from one fund to another, and then the interest payments will be taken out of the debt re, the, um, Riverwalk Debt Fund versus the construction fund.
So can I get a motion to take and do exactly what Ashley just stated? Move the funds from Riverwalk, uh, construction to the Riverwalk Debt Fund?
Are you sure about this?
I am one hundred percent positive, I even checked.
You had a reliable source?
Yep, Mark Forseth.
No, a reliable source, a reliable source. Hi, Mark. So, no.
Was that you making a motion?
No, I was just, I was just, uh, doing, uh, just, just talking about the project, so. Extending the meeting.
Yeah.
Well, she didn't, she didn't really, you know, she wasn't just exuberating confidence in what she was saying there, so.
This is the first time I've had to do this.
That's why I asked.
Do you have a motion yet?
No, let's have a motion.
I make the motion.
Mike makes a motion, uh, Dave seconds, uh, any other discussion? Let's see, I gotta mess it up, Dave?
Yes.
Levi?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Can I get a mo, uh, any? Gary, anything you wanna take and add?
Gary? Move up to the microphone when you're talking, please.
So can I get a motion for adjournment?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, second? And Mike seconds, we're adjourned. Man, I thought it was gonna be shorter than that. Remember not to take my map tonight, though.